I make motion that we approve the agenda.
Number three. Ten items. Eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, sixteen. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
I make motion that we approve the same item. I mean, eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, sixteen.
Any other question? Is that good? Number three. Ten items.
Yeah, so, on the agenda and you, um, pull it up, um, assembly, uh, our task, the student code of conduct, where we've made some changes to it. We do a basic, a little highlighter, with the changes were whatever. Uh, our process, anytime we have policy or any changes, we send it to the largest, uh, union organization that we have in AEA. So I'll send it to them and they will look at it, review it, if they have any, um, suggestion or whatever. Uh, we can choose to, um, adopt the recommendation over the June 1st, that depends on what we have. But next four weeks, in November, I will have the student code come up on the agenda that you guys to approve, um, the student code a month or so. To just kind of scan through and look at it and counsel me, but if you have any questions, we can entertain a question for them. So this is, you guys, pleasure your time.
Do I have motion to approve item number seven two?
I have a motion that we approve item number seventeen.
Seven. Number three. Last, bring an item to, uh, participation. We'll have one to one and seven, like, big this time, we have three minutes. Good afternoon, everybody.
Good afternoon.
Good to see everybody. Um, we hope that all AEA members come to our tent this Saturday from eleven to two. If you're an AEA member, you and your family can come in. We've got food and drinks and bands and DJs, so this is a great event, and if you want to come in, fellowship is open to every AEA member. So we're usually in lot K, um, over in the corporate section. So I'll be posting some instructions, but please enjoy your week, be safe, and hopefully we'll see you again. Anyone else would like to speak at this time from participation? Anyone else like to speak at this time? Last time, that's all. Anyone? Anyone like to speak at this time from participation?
You, you said, tell your son that told we waiting on him. She on the way in?
Um, she'll drop on the door.
Yeah, wait on me now.
Yes, I am.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I am Tanya Duke, one of the band booster parents. We have a lot of issues that we're wanting to address. About band and about the school, schools in general. First, we're going to start with the band. Mr. Hill was, I don't know, about to be terminated, about to be let go, on the strength of one kid. One kid. Nobody asked this parent to be in the school every day, all day. Nobody asked this parent to be in the school every day. Nobody asked any of these children that be in the school every day. Ms. Duke has three points. And Ms. Duke is not a first-time mom. She don't have one little kid. I'm a veteran. I consider myself a veteran mom. I have older children plus one. You know when children be lying? Number one, y'all had a fight up there last week. The video was so good, it was made for TV. If anything had happened to that child, y'all would know it because it be on video. Number two, you don't wait. He ran the bleachers, no, he ran the bleachers because I stepped on my boy's back of his foot. He ran the bleachers, he ate the pre-game meal. He played the field show, the fight broke out, his grandmother asked for him. Mr. Hill politely said, "No, ma'am, I got your band." This young lady told her, "I'll take a bullet for him, it's nothing going to happen to him." She left. She wasn't too concerned now because she left. I stayed wait on mine, she stayed wait on hers, she stayed wait on hers, she stayed wait on hers, she stayed wait on hers. She left. He turned around because she didn't get there in time enough, asked this young lady, "Let me use your phone." This the young lady that has been taking him home every day, every day. If you go get his grandmother and ask her, "Which one of these people been taking your baby home?" Nobody, she couldn't tell you, she don't know if it was you, 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 or me. Then, eleven thirty at night, eleven thirty. We get a message on our band group about him being spanked and she was going to come up to the school. My second point, if he had got whooped, it wouldn't have took him to eleven thirty at night to tell. He would have either told this young lady that he asked to use his phone, he would have asked one of the children, "Let me use your phone, because I, this man just hit me." Children don't hold, they don't hold it, and I know they don't hold it, because when this lady was the principal at Midfield, and they overlooked my baby, I could put it out on my phone. Y'all taught them how to do emails, right? He Gmail me and said, "Make me feel better." I said, "What's going on? You failed the test?" He said, "No, ma'am, they didn't tap me for the honor society." That was at ten o'clock in the morning. He didn't wait till he got home to tell us, he did it then. Third, we can't choose how we love our children. We cannot choose how we love our children. You going to love your child enough to get in the car with anybody. You sent a message in our group and you said, in our group, "Did his mama come pick him up?" I'm in Hoover at work, dropped her address, blew it out, so all we had to do was hit it for directions. Thank you for whoever bring him home. Mr. Hill, Mr. Hill has been, I don't know about y'all, but they had a teacher at Rutledge Middle School, when my kid was chubby, told him he was too big to not to do anything. Mr. Hill taught him something that, to love himself, that was suicidal. He could have took that and, "Well, I'm not better enough." A teacher told him that, under her watch. I've been complaining to this boy for three years, three years. No, you saw me over there at the, um, at the, at the pet center. It's the same lady, just got a little bit of gray. But i- i- it's, it's the same thing, the band. Our booster money, our booster money. We pay booster dues. Our booster money shouldn't have anything to do with Midfield School. That's our money. That's not nothing that y'all gave us, that's what we worked hard for and got. We went to the Magic City, I mean, to the, what is it, A and M, looking a mess. Every school had on their dress uniforms, we had on sweat suits. Because she couldn't get the money to get our uniforms clean. Midfield, we are not rich parents. It costs twenty-six dollars to clean them uniforms, you know how I know? Because I clean mine. But every parent ain't got twenty-six dollars and they got multiple children. And we shouldn't have to do that when we pay band fees, when we pay band fees. We do that for our reason. Our money that we go to work for and work hard for shouldn't be in y'all accounts. That's our money, that's our money. Then, I've been asking for computers for years and years and years and years and years. In order for our children to prosper, to be a doctor like you, successful people like you, give them the same education that they gave you. We got to have our children doing better. My baby, and I'm not going to tell you what teacher, because Lord knows I don't want to lose a job, told him, "If, please, bring your computer from home so I can teach you." It ain't fair to them, it ain't fair to the teachers, and it's not fair to us as parents. We trust y'all to do what y'all need to do with our children. Y'all take Mr. Hill, y'all taking the computers, y'all taking our money, what is it for us to do? What is it for us to do? So we are here to protest in solidarity. If he was beating these children, do you think they'd be wanting to make signs? All these signs are sayings that came from these children. They are here peacefully because they want their band director back. All these children has a story, all of them, because somebody has made them feel not worth anything. Mr. Hill has made them feel like they are people. I don't care if you don't like me, I may not care about you, but I'm going to respect you. And that's what he earned from all of us in here, respect. Anything that you got grudgingly against me, put it in your pocket, put it in your pocket and carry it. But remember that that's a good person, you letting a good person go. Midfield City School is not right, y'all hands ain't clean. Y'all hands not clean, we got teachers in here, we got certifications. We got this person and some kind of this person, that's a baby mama, that's a baby dad, that's a cousin, auntie, friend. All in the same elements together.
Thank you so much, and, uh, I appreciate y'all coming out. And, and, and we haven't made no decision on anything yet. I can't discuss it because still a pain, but I, 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 I hear you, hear you concerned, I hear your pain. You know, you'll sit down, look at it, come to.
I hope y'all do feel, not just my pain, these children's pain. It's not about me, I've been out of school so long, I can't even remember how to add sometimes. It's about them. He makes these children feel worthy. We went down to A and M, they was the smallest band in that parade, but they was the loudest. They was the loudest. They didn't dress like the rest of them, they didn't have the big drums like the rest of them, but they played with heart. And y'all think they're going to keep playing with heart and representing Midfield with God's fearless leader? I don't think so, I don't think so. Mine already told me, no Mr. Hill, no Midfield. No Mr. Hill? No Midfield.
Thank you so much, uh, for today, and for recently, yes, um.
I'd just like to say, I got put out of school in nineteen seventy-five at Midfield High School, because I said, "Everything going to be fine." Now, this what I'm looking at, everything just flat. We need to make a correct decision and a right decision. Because when I was up here, we couldn't go into the life there. We couldn't go in the gym, out the school out. Now, here we are today, we got to get it right. Before some of y'all was born, I was up here having black history in, in the past. Got put out of school unauthorized assembly. I got put out of school, my ass roll was too deep. We got prominent black people that had graduated from Midfield that would love to put our money and energies back into this school. From Dr. Henry Pegg, that went to Midfield, that graduated from Alabama A and M. We are willing to put money towards the band.
Okay. Thank you so much. Anyone else before I move on?
I, I would like to speak, um, and it's on behalf of Mr. Hill. That man has done, I don't know, at the things for these children standing outside in this hall that are here for him. That man takes money out of his own pocket to make sure these babies have food before their games, so that they're not playing on an empty stomach. This man, this young lady right here, if y'all choose to fire him, this is the second band director. Senior year next year, she says she won't stay, and she'll make sure that her friends that will be coming into the school, they'll understand, the band program is nothing without that man. That man bends over backwards for not only these children, but for their families. Because any one of us parents could say, "Mr. Hill, we're short on money this month, can we, can we make half our band fee at the beginning of the month and then make, maybe make up the rest throughout the month?" That man says, "Yes." Or if it's, you have like maybe a hundred dollars left, don't worry about it, I got you, I got your baby. This is a man that has mentored every one of these children out here in this hall, plus ones that go to that high school, the middle school, and I wouldn't be surprised if some of these elementary kids don't look up to him. But this is, this is what this kid's wanting to get rid of, somebody that wants to be a person that all these kids look up to, that will stand up for them, that will take a bullet for them. And yes, that man told that kid not to leave the bleachers the night of the winter fight, but he had already told every one of those kids, if something goes down, you hit your stomach in the bleachers, that's your safest place to be, because bullets have no names. I, me, myself, I would take a bullet for any one of these children, and that man would too. These kids, the reason they put their heart and soul into A and M, is because that's his alma mater. They wanted to show that school what he taught them, what he put in their heart. She has wanted to walk away from bands so many times, and that man has told her, "Please, please don't leave. You don't realize what, how good you sound and how good that continuing what that ki- what college that can get you in on a, on a band scholarship, on a music scholarship." He tells any one of them out there that, he pushes them to be their best and to know that you love yourself and not worry about what anybody else thinks of you. As long as you love yourself and you love yourself in your heart, you are the best person and you're going to be the best person you can be. Please, for these children's sake, don't get rid of him for one kid lying to you. They need him.
Thank you so much. Anyone else who want to speak?
To take it back off of what, um, Ms. Sheen and Ms. Duke said, and what a lot of bands, if you really get rid of Mr. Hill, next year, y'all probably won't have a band. And I know some of y'all could probably care less about the whole band program, but does that means?
So some of us, the band is our way to escape from everything we're going through. So basically, if I are the one person that most of us have had, that's basically taking away our reason. That means there's nothing else that we would really want to do in that school but band, and if he's gone, I don't have a reason to do it.
And a lot of us came into high school thinking, I senior year, junior year, sophomore year, or freshman year, thinking, oh, we finna have the typical high school problems. We finna have to worry about grades, we finna have to worry about classes, we finna have to worry about relationships. No, I, I'm a freshman, I came into high school, I was read about all this, so plus that, but now, when the per- when the people I knew who are I could alone is gone, and y'all thinking about taking him away from us, the people we care about who been over backwards for us, who we didn't have nothing, y'all thinking about taking that man away? That's not right, guys. And mostly I call it, don't even know it's my name, but no, y'all don't have to. But the thing is that Mr. Hill is a heart and soul, if y'all take that man away, y'all won't have a band program. And I know a lot of these kids right now are thinking about leaving. The only reason some of us went to actual practice today because we wanted to make our seniors feel special. This their last home game, it's the same right there, right now, out in the hallway, listening. This man has been here for more than four years in the band, he has tried his best. He is our drum major and he will forever be, even when he graduates. But all we want for this man is to send him off with a great, with a great year in Midfield.
Thank y'all so much.
Good afternoon, everybody. I'm coming speaking on behalf of my son, he's at work, a lot of you guys probably know him, D'Angelo Young. I'm his mother, and D'Angelo has been in the band since the eighth grade. D'Angelo started, Mr., um, Hill recruited him. D'Angelo has never played an instrument before his life. D'Angelo is now playing the baritone, he's a baritone leader in the band. He's a junior, next year, he'll be a senior, and for the people that know D'Angelo, he's going places, he's going to be somebody. But he has told me that if Mr. Hill's not here, he's not going to be in the band anymore. And that has taught my heart, to see my son from the eighth grade to his senior year, I wanted to see his senior year and him being recognized and for him to even maybe go for a band scholarship, because I know he's going to get the academics, I know that. But I also wanted the opportunity as well. I didn't even think I was going to cry and say all this, but I just think Mr. Hill is a good man and he has some good kids in this band, and a lot of them are, are going to give up if you guys get rid of him. And I know we can't make a decision, but I would ask y'all to please, whatever you do, consider these kids and their future, and thank you.
Thank y'all so much. Great time.
Um, I know, most of y'all know me from college, uh, high school and being at middle school with Jacobi. He's my son, and Mr. Hill has taught him. My son has A and M student, Mr. Hill said, "Don't worry about it." He'll, he'll learn, he, he will learn how to play the drums. When he was in sixth grade, the end of his sixth grade year, he started coming up to the high school with Janaya, my daughter. Mr. Hill opened him with welcome, welcomed him with open arms, taught him how to play the, um, standard drum. And now, he's on the standard drum. Please don't take Mr. Hill, please. And that's all I got to say.
Thank you so much. Thank everyone that spoke. God land on every earth, and they look and see me there. Appreciate everyone coming out, the parents. And like, you know, doesn't know how y'all feel about it and everything, which is good to school, it's good. Making decisions tough. We had made, like I said, still a basket, so I can't talk on it. I appreciate y'all coming out before we made that decision, and have some good work. Thank y'all so much.
We found out one of the sessions will be made.
Can we know, we know, we decide?
It's still, see, still will pay over everything, if he gonna be there, it's in days of, you know, so it, it, it's a deal, boy.
But it's been, it's been days.
You have, you have a season that go by. You got policies, you got procedures down.
Can, can you estimate when he will be back for our children?
These children's grades, and that's a class, that's a whole class, they don't have a grade.
The whole, the whole band group. We have no grades for our children, because nobody's there to put them in for.
And it's, 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 oh, it's the, the end of the season now, I mean, when is he coming back?
Wh- when, just give us an estimation of when we would have a, a day of him coming back so that our kids will know. Please.
Well, wait, I, 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 um, uh, anytime there's a legal matter, and I'm being as transparent as I could possibly be with you. I understand your heart, I understand the things that you all, what you guys are saying. Um, without us going into the details of, because they will be illegal on our part because we have personnel that we can't discuss personnel issues with people, that's the constitution, that's the law. And then we have a child that made allegations that we have to by law protect. We are, well, then, I've heard what you had to say, I've heard what everybody had to say. We are, damn it, excuse me, hold on, be, wait a minute, because I'm not getting into the character of this child. It's not even legal for me, we can't even bring up this child, because as an organization, what we have to do is follow the law. So when, when the thing happens, my responsibility is communicate with the State Department as far as what, what we should do. We've done that. He has his legal team, we have our legal team. We can't tell you that December fifth, Mr. Hill will be back. We cannot tell you that, okay? What we'll tell you is that we are following the process that in place. The State Department knows about it or whatever the case may be. I don't want anything unjust or whatever to happen to anyone. I brought Mr. Hill to Midfield, I've been knowing Mr. Hill since two thousand eight. I bought, so nobody can tell, tell me about Mr. Hill, because I know Mr. Hill.
Well, you should know.
Well, excuse me, excuse me, excuse me. Because, yeah, I should know, but I'm also superintendent, right? So I have a responsibility that relates to the law. So that's what we're doing, we're following the law, and when it is done and complete, we'll know where we stand with it. I know you want an answer, I want you to have an answer, but we cannot give you an answer any quicker than the process allows us to render you a solution. Right now, we going through the legal process as far as what should happen. We can't really go into detail about anything, we can't. I know you want it, I wish we could tell you, because I like transparency. I like putting it out there, I like that, but we have to follow the law, and that's what we're doing. And I don't want anything unjust to happen to Mr. Hill, nor the, the, the students that make that. I don't want anything unjust to happen to anybody, because at the end of the day, can nobody write a narrative on Dr. Williams as far as how I lead Midfield City? I sleep well with the spirit of integrity that I walk with. A person may feel different, that's what they sleep with. But I know that I'm not mistreating anybody, we're not mistreating anybody, we're taking it through the process. And that's what we are with it, and when we find the answer that we can give you guys and we can publicly speak to it, that's when we'll do it, but we can't do it before then. That's the law, we have to follow the law, nobody's going to break the law because we want Mr. Hill back. Everybody, I want everything running as normal as it's supposed to run, with a teacher in place and everything. But we got to follow this process, and that's what we're doing.
Okay, so about their grades, because it's not just the high school kids that have no grades for this class. I'm pretty sure the middle school does any, or if, you know, I don't know if they've got a band director over there that's taking over or not, but I know she doesn't, she didn't, and that's going to hurt her grades, that's going to hurt any of these kids' grades out there.
But what we do is that each school have a leader, which is their principal, as relates to what goes in. So Mr. He- Mr. Hill not being in place or whatever, I am sure that they have people on their team at their school that's going to make sure that grades are inputted through their interaction coming to band practice or whatever. We have, there's Adam, we have certain people that's still there present to see how passionate these children are performing and what they're doing. So their grades being inputted into the system is not going to be an issue.
Well, her report card come home and she has no grades.
And then, so we're going to fix that, but by the end of the semester, when it's time to award that. But by the end of the semester, when it's time to award that credit, the principal at the school will make sure that that part is straight. It will not be where the child did not earn a credit because the teacher is not in place. But the, the principal will make sure that's taken care of.
All right. Thank y'all so much. Move on. Uh, next side moment is, uh, six thirty.
All right. There's Mr. Terry here. Seven, jump forward. All right. So we know every month we, uh, acknowledge our professionals who are doing an excellent job. Um, we have acknowledged custodians, after your work, you don't have to necessarily be a teacher, but we're talking about our professionals here at Midfield. So for this particular month, Mr. Terry is being, uh, recognized for the great work that he is doing at Midfield Elementary School. Um, he also is a part of our attendance team. When we have to go and solidify, um, students' residence or whatever, he's a part of that. So he's taking on that extra task as well. He also saw a need in the lakes to driving buses. So, you know, he have received, Mr. Pan, oh, he. That's being passed. Okay, but you're working on it.
Speaking of this, this.
Well, it's a driving bus too. It's our hero. But, but, but Mr. Terry is a, um, great part of the team after school. I watch him as relates to being outside and helping us with this missing process. Um, it, you know, I just feel it, I feel very solid knowing that Mr. Terry is over at the elementary school helping Ms. Felton and Dr. Urban as relates to, uh, our students' well-being. So, um, just kudos and a special thank you from our board, our leadership for the work that you're doing in Midfield City. Do we have any administrators that's here that didn't see there?
Yes, um, yes.
All right. And just because Ms. Watkins is our introvert in the group, right? So she missed this presentation, but because she's an introvert and I vowed to help bring her out of the introvert and give her much, as much attention as she deserves because she's a very hardworking, um, professional. I just wanted to, uh, thank you on having certain issues with attendance. Along with our board, you know, just saying thank you for the work that you've done. Um, we know Midfield is very small and many of us wear seven, eight, nine hats as well. So Ms. Watkins oversee our attendance. So she makes sure that we're complying and, and things are where it should be as relates to that area. So just a token for our appreciation. Um, Rutledge Middle School is a shining star for, um, our district. Um, I'm gonna read to you guys in one second. Our counselor just, uh, won national and state recognition. Um, she sent me the information. I'll read it. But can you briefly tell them was around what that is about as far as our counselor at the middle school? This is a recent honor that we receive.
Okay, so Ms. Bethel is, um, not just a school counselor. For years, she called herself a professional school counselor and all of that is very true when it comes to Ms. Bethel. So Ms. Bethel has received national recognition, which is the highest recognition for school counselor um, here in small little Midfield, um, city school or Midfield, Alabama. And it's the RAP's rec- recognition. So, uh, Midfield, uh, counseling program is one of the, uh, not state of the art, but national, um, recognized. And so, um, Ms. Bethel does a great, great work with working with the kids and creating the program. She implement her, um, counselor's standards to fidelity. And she working with the other school counselors to also get them to that place.
So. So what Ms. Bethel has done has, um, gained, um, the, the school has gained some recognition. So next month, I wanna honor Ms. Bethel with something from us as relates to that prestigious award as well. But for today, because it's national, um, principals' bond, we are honoring Music Watkins for the hard work and the great work that you're doing at Rutledge Middle.
Thank you. Appreciate your all.
She don't mind you taking her picture. Thank you.
Okay, as far as the assistant principal, um, if you guys will come on inside real quick, the assistant principal? All right, so I'm gonna read this one more time. We just wanted to, to make sure that you guys were honored and aware of how we are, um, appreciative and grateful for the work that you guys are, uh, rendering to our students. We know that you guys have our uncle's back. Y'all are really solid in that. Um, you all are solid in the knowledge that you all are demonstrating your area. And we're just fortunate to have you guys as part of our leadership team. So we wanted to just honor you guys. So everyone got the same thing, but I wanted to read to you guys what we have, okay? And part of this comes from the book studies that we've done, whatever, one from last year and, um, this, um, current year. And also, um, I stole some great words from Ms., uh, Matthews that you are here and you reading. A great organization is one that delivers superior performance and makes a distinct impact over a long period of time and cost. Ms. Adra Minor, Ms. Dr. Brittany Urban, Mr. Derek Akerson. A special thanks to you for not just looking out of the window, but looking in the mirror and being self-aware of who you are as a professional. Your awareness will continue to assist this organization in building a framework for greatness. We honor the great work that you're doing in assisting Midfield City Schools in our continuous efforts of being caring, accountable, reputable, and respectful. You are building experiences in the lives of others that are mineral, memorable, and meaningful. You are a trait. With recognition and encouragement, Dr. Joan Williams, superintendent, Midfield City Schools.
Thank you.
All right, and Akerson.
Y'all take a picture, yes.
One, two, three.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for raising your hand.
That's it for me.
Thank you, Dr. Williams. All right, um, next is the, um, what's your report?
I don't know. I have, I just wanna say congratulations to all of our employees, our faculty, staff. Appreciate what y'all do. Just want y'all to continue the work that you do and continue to try and stay safe and thank you for waiting in front of you.
Thank you, Mrs. Watson.
I'm repeating, Mr. Watson, congratulations to all of you. Um, I know y'all think y'all weren't going. No, it, it does not. Um, y'all have been with us when we didn't have and y'all been with us when we had. And so we always try to look out for our staff. So thank y'all so much for taking care of our children and, and being here for them. Um, I can't say enough about all of you principals and assistant principals. I know all of y'all was promoted to your position. And I think, uh, Dr. Williams did a great thing promoting y'all pretty much to where you are. Uh, just continue to be great and do great things and go vote. When?
November fifth.
That's all I got.
Um, I just wanna echo everything that they said because without the principals and assistant principals, those are the ones that keep our school together. And, and it's not easy. It's definitely not easy. And we wanna thank y'all for it. Um, congratulations, Ms. Bethel. She has been school counselor since my kids were there, since they were there. So she has always been professional and, and just kind and knowledgeable. Mr. Terry, yeah, congratulate him. But thank you all, to all the staff, to everybody. We can do it without you. And like she said, go vote, go give them a gift.
Thank you, Ms. Watson. Nice, uh, like, take time, thank you. Uh, just, um, look forward to this, this, this. Thank you for the, uh, your undertaking, the homecoming, the outstanding job, great crowd and everything, you know. Not knowing that the major, you know, don't pop and everything. And that was a, a blessing. It was, I appreciate you for that. And, uh, Dr. Urban, you know, Miss Bethel. You certainly have to school, she's all dressed up and it's very, very nice. Outstanding job. And, uh, Ms. Watkins and Ms. Manna, I had someone came in complaining about the food. So I didn't go to the cook. I went to the kids. I had lunch with them. And I sit down there and, and they, they said the food was fine. So I, some of everything, it's fine with me. I'm all laid down asleep. It was all right. And Ms. Mary Weller, and I will appreciate what you do with public registration.
Thank you.
Thank you. You did a great job. And I want to, you know, make sure that you get your flower right in your way.
Appreciate that.
And, and Dr. Williams, and, uh, I want to appreciate, uh, your son, your son. You're stepping up. And in time, you need to be. You don't have to be in it, but I appreciate you doing, you step up. But that's not how it should be, but you keep your ball rolling. Appreciate you, I appreciate you trying to make a system.